Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, May 4th, 2022. It's 6:00 PM. It's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. Call the meeting to order. Ms. Kendal, will you give us your call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Peake.
Here.
Mayor Protem McAdams.
Here.
Councilmember Coletti.
Here.
Paduri. Smith.
And Councilmember Smith will be joining us a little later.
Okay. And Councilmember Tomlinson.
Present.
Absent from the meeting. Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you. And Councilmember Tomlinson, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 502 with Emilio and Smith absent. All right, moving on to Mayor's Proclamation, 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week this week. Whereas the office of professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. Municipal clerk provides professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. Whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government. And my laptop has just frozen, so I can't read the rest. Ms. Kendal, will you read the rest, please?
I do not have it presently in front of me, but I think it just finishes with, recommend, just a commendation to the city clerk and the deputy city clerk. And of course, I couldn't do this job without my deputy and of course, the support of staff and my city manager and council, of course. So, thank you.
We thank you very much for your service. All right, moving on to council and staff announcements. We just finished a closed session on the city attorney RFQ with no reportable action. Mr. Harvey, are there any staff announcements?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any. Thank you.
And any council announcements? Councilmember Tomlinson, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff and Public Works for having the twinkle light situation downtown on Lighthouse on the trees. The twinkle lights have all been put back up. They were repurchased this year. They're beautiful, kind of a warm glow. And the downlighting that was a part of this year's program has also been installed. I know it was slightly delayed because of COVID. And they worked through the delivery timelines and were very patient, but they look great. And I've driven downtown at night quite a few times. I recommend going and checking it out. So, thank you, Public Works and the city staff for sticking with us on that. And I personally like it and I recommend people checking it out at night. Thanks.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. This past Saturday, I had a wonderful time interviewing 15 candidates for the Youth Ambassadors of Pacific Grove program. These young adults really do represent everything that's promising and good about Pacific Grove. And I look forward to interacting with them more. Thank you.
Mayor Protem McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. This week is Teachers Appreciation Week. I would like to say a sincere thank you to teachers and educators who take care of our students, especially this last year, and still they are maneuvering the pandemic. I see you and I am so grateful for the positive impacts that you have to our community and families. Last night, I attended the Reproductive Rights Rally hosted by the Women's March Monterey Bay. Access to safe healthcare is important to all residents. And the impacts of restrictions, bans, and attacks on women's reproductive freedom disproportionately impacts populations that already face barriers to accessing care. These include communities of color, people with low incomes, immigrants, and young people. Thank you.
Now go to general public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to give comment?
We do.
Excellent. Welcome. Glad to see people here.
All two of you.
Lively. Good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to remind the council one last time before our big show this weekend that good old days will be occurring on Saturday and Sunday all weekend downtown. And the event will kick off on Saturday with the Pancake Breakfast at Jewel Park from the Kiwanis Club, 8:00 in the morning, followed by the Rotary Club Parade at 10:00 AM and festivities downtown starting at 11:00. Moon Alice is back this year for two sets on Saturday and Sunday. The event is free for admission and we've got a lot, a really great show for you. And we also do something, we give away something at the event every time. And this year, we have these beautiful shirts that I'd like to just show off. So, come by and get one. We have plenty of different sizes and we think they're beautiful. So, we hope to see you all at the event. It's going to be a good one. It's been three years and we can't be more excited to share it with you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jenny McBurner, I'm the present CEO of the Carmel. Oh, no, no, the Pacific Grove Chamber. It's been a long day. I'm sorry about that. That was such a bad faux pas. I apologize to the public as well. Just two more comments on good old days. Make sure you check out the quilt show this year. There are a lot of quilters during the pandemic and apparently this year is going to be the best show ever, as well as the Kids Firefighter Challenge. It is going to be on Saturday, not on Sunday this year. So, we're trying to spread the word. If you have kids that want to do that Kids Firefighter Challenge, it's going to be on Saturday, midday, same location, but not on Sunday. And then I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Coletti said. I also got to be on the panel on Saturday for the Youth Ambassadors. Just want to say, Pacific Grove should be really proud of your high school students. The 15 that we saw that day were exemplary and really, really exceptional students. So, you're raising them right. They're really wonderful, wonderful kids. So, you should be very proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public on Zoom wishing to speak?
We do have some hands raised. Mayor, about a half a dozen here. Jane Haynes.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In connection with the proclamation declaring the Professional Municipal Clerks Week, I just want to say that I professionally worked over a period of 20 years with city, city and county clerks in three different counties, Monterey, San Benito, and Santa Cruz. And I have never seen a more efficient, commendable city clerk's office than we have. Just as a few examples, yesterday, I wanted to see the 1906 ordinances. I called Sandra about 11:15, about 2:00. She said, "Come by, Carrie will give them to you. We'll have some gloves for you." I went and I examined these wonderful, this wonderful old volume of beautiful handwritten ordinances. That is the type of service that I constantly receive from our city clerk's office. There are other cities and counties that have good city clerks too. But I have never seen one better than Pacific Grove's. The, one time I went in, a couple of years ago, I went in and I wanted something that was dated. I think it was 19, it was 2003 or something. Within a minute, they gave it to me. It was perfectly organized. If you ever look in those records, they are beautifully organized. And I just appreciate it so much. If you couldn't finish reading that proclamation, I just want to read one of the whereas's. It says, "Whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality rendering equal service to all." That's exactly what I experienced. There is no indication that even though I put in a lot of public records requests, there's absolutely no indication that they object to that. And I just, I just am deeply grateful for the way that our city clerk's office works, both Sandra and Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Michael Ipsen.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to commend the city council for the establishment of the DEI Task Force. The Task Force is a powerful tool to transform the city council's stated core value of inclusiveness from mere words to concrete practice. This requires that the carefully researched recommendations of the Task Force are actually implemented, that the requirements regarding inclusion are enforced and not ignored. Our county, our state, and our country face tremendous challenges to realizing this objective of inclusiveness. This was brought home again in the meeting of the Recreation Board last week that reviewed an application for a summer lights program proposed by the same people who sponsored the Feast of Lanterns. Following the decision to deny a permit for the Feast of Lanterns because of its history of offending Chinese, the Recreation Board advised the group to begin discussions with community stakeholders, the DEI Task Force, and others to address concerns expressed by the public and stakeholder groups at the city council meeting on February 16th. At the meeting last week, the spokeswoman of the group stated that they had reached out to relevant parties. Yet minutes later, two individuals from the Chinese Association of Monterey Bay responded that they had proposed to the Feast of Lanterns to collaborate on sponsoring a multicultural festival. When they received no response to the written offer, they called the chairperson, who upon answering the phone said she had no time to talk and would call back, which she never did. We are not aware of any Asian organization that was contacted by this group. This is not simply discourteous. It is dismissive of a group which certainly seems to be on the basis of race. If the requirement to carry out true outreach and consultation is ignored, why should their proposal be entertained, particularly when the application was made months after the stipulated deadline? And we have heard that three other applications were denied because they missed the deadline. Now, a pet parade organized by city staff is a wonderful idea, free of any negative aspects. My wife and I would offer our assistance in any way, and we are absolutely sure that we could recruit many more people to create a festive atmosphere where the focus is on children and adults and their treasured pets, children and adults and pets from all backgrounds. Creating inclusiveness requires hard work, persistence, and commitment to principles. It is clear that a gap exists in understanding what inclusiveness is and how it is important to the entire community. Let's not take a step backward. Let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicki Pierce.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Vicki Pierce. I'm a longtime PG resident, a marine biologist, and a member of the group that's working to ensure a solid future for the former NOAA property on Lighthouse, one that respects the city zoning and local coastal program and the safeguards of the Coastal Commission. If you're aware, the federal agency auctioning this property closed the auction on April 6th. The winning bidder is a private individual unconnected with the local community, a foreign national who appears to have been unaware of any local restrictions on the property. Only marine scientific and educational purposes are allowed as specified in PG's local coastal program. We plan to file an injunction to stop the sale before it becomes final. We are asking the city council simply to endorse the application for an injunction in a letter, an amicus brief. It does not commit the city to any legal or other costs or involvement. Our arguments for stopping the sale are strong. They do not relate to the prospective new owner, but to the deeply flawed process of the federal government's auction. The government agency responsible for the auction ignored the report of another agency that this property was ineligible for sale in this way. It failed to engage with community stakeholders as required under federal guidelines, and it failed to fully disclose local restrictions around uses of the property as instructed by the Coastal Commission. The city's endorsement would add significant support to the legal standing of the injunction because the city is a strong stakeholder. Recall that in 2012, the city council passed a resolution requesting a conveyance of the property to the city of Pacific Grove. And it recently passed two more resolutions supporting public benefit use. The city has a strong interest in seeing this property restored and protected with its archaeologically and environmentally sensitive landscapes. The city does not want to see years of legal entailed entanglement with an owner whose uninformed plans have been thwarted. An amicus brief summarizing the history and violations is being drafted, and you will be asked to approve it at your coming meeting. It is in your strong interest and the interest of the city and all its residents that you do so. Thank you for considering this matter.
Thank you.
Debbie Beck.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And also to market the meeting to the general public to include they can be watched on Channel 25. I think that's extremely important for all of our residents to know. I would like to discuss the summer events that were presented to the Rec Department by Christina Gruber and Michelle Evans. And I would encourage council to consider allowing these events when they become, they come before you at the next council meeting. We need to heal as a community and our youth should be priority at this time. In reading the Rec Department recommendation to not allow the events due to no dogs allowed in Caledonia Park and not enough time to put it on the event calendar, I would like to remind council that we closed down Lighthouse Avenue during COVID to allow roaming and playing games in the streets. Vendors were set up and without very little notice. We can do better for our residents of Pacific Grove. And we have shown our respect to the Chinese community. And it's time for our Rec Department to pivot from the annual Feast of Lanterns and work with our community members and not find reasons, and not find reasons to not support these events. The request was made for a pet parade, a light show, and dance performance. I am proud of the Youth Ambassador Program that has been created. And let's support these events when it comes before council. Not all events should be based on revenue and perhaps we need to get back, give back to the taxpayers of Pacific Grove that support our city budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm speaking to you this evening for COAST, the Center for Ocean Art, Science, and Technology, in concert with Vicki Pierce, to strongly encourage the council to submit an amicus letter supporting COAST's federal injunction application to stop the General Services Administration, the Public Buildings Reform Board, and the Office of Management and Budget from concluding the sale of the NOAA building. What we know about the winning bidder for the NOAA property in the GSA's auction is that it's a noncitizen and apparently a real estate speculator with little understanding of the very strict land use policies in the local coastal program that prohibit commercial or residential use of the property, which is designated open space institutional and limited to marine science research and educational purposes. The NOAA building was the site of the Southwest Fisheries Science Center, which funded the building's marvelous mural along with a grant from NOAA. PG Museum had an exhibit in 2011 to 12 titled "Green Seas, Blue Seas", which celebrated and interpreted the building's mural created by artist Ray Troll and painted in 32 separate panels by public artist Roberto Solas and his team, and mounted by Crane around the top of the building's entire facade. The mural's images depict the 100-year legacy of the Monterey Bay sardine fishery and illustrate how fish, marine mammals, sea turtles, and other marine life respond to changes in climate and ocean conditions, along with the history of research ships and technologies and innovations in fishing vessels. The city of PG has made its interest in the property known to the federal government since at least 2012, when a resolution was approved requesting that the property be conveyed to the city whenever NOAA moved out. Yet, the Public Buildings Reform Board incorrectly determined it was eligible for a high-value properties auction despite not meeting the criteria. PPRB also failed to consult with the community, including the Alone Coastanoan Esalen Nation, for whom the property is a sacred site. The GSA has not heeded strongly worded letters from Representative Panetta and the Coastal Commission asking them to correct their misguided actions, including the auction of the property, misleading advertising, and lack of full disclosure. COAST is dedicated to assuring the building will be used for marine scientific research and education purposes while preserving and protecting the culturally and environmentally sensitive landscapes and ecosystems associated with this property. The city's important standing would lend powerful support for COAST's legal efforts. And I just want to also say, yay, Sandra and Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Christine Gruber.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Christine Gruber. I am here to talk about the Youth Ambassadors. We are excited for this new program for our PG students to shine. And I just want to set the record straight that I am in talks with Mr. Wang and Ms. Byman, who called into the Rec Board meeting saying that I had not replied to them. Unfortunately, after I did meet with them, I did have to have an unplanned surgery, which took away from my time. And during the month of March and going into April is also a very busy time for me at my job for doing inventory and ordering textbooks for the next school year. So, during that time, I was busy and did not get a chance to get back with them with no intention of losing contact with them. So, fortunately, we are back in talks and are planning on working together. And they are enthusiastic to help me, just as, I don't mean me, I mean all the PG, when they contacted me in the first place. So, we are ready to bring these kids out to shine and to show what they can do. You will be amazed of the ideas these children have to bring foresight to the people of PG of what's important to them. So, we did have 15 people apply and our goal was to have 10. And we decided to keep all of them because they were amazing and have great ideas to make PG a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence Endymer.
Welcome.
Thank you. And all I wanted to do was echo the thanks to Sandra and Carrie for all the service and help they've given me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Inga. Kamala Lita Garcia.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much for all of your ongoing service. Before I begin, Happy Mother's Day to everybody. And also to recognize tomorrow as being Cinco de Mayo. So, I sent everybody an email, rather a long one, earlier regarding the Summer of Lights application, what have you. I'm not going to go over it because there are so many reports that contain the same information. You know, you can Google any of them and read everything over and over and over again. So, I'm very glad that the interviews have occurred and that there's positive feedback with regards to the applicants. And I have said a number of times, there's no reason to not begin the Ambassadors of Pacific Grove program minus the events. I would think events come at the end of the year and not so soon after the start of the program. I think it's great that there's a youth leadership program. It will help them prepare for the future and I think provide some sort of, oh, a sense of security for the city of Pacific Grove if these kids stick around with regards to an interest in, you know, our police department, fire department, running for city council, working for the city as a staff person and what have you. I think that's exciting. So, with regards to the pet parade that will soon be coming to you, I want you to know that there's nothing wrong with the pet parade. And I found it interesting and I shared it with you, the Cedar Street Time article from 2019 where Ruby Nodillo gave away the pet parade to Elmarie Dyke in 1958 when she revived the Feast of Lanterns. I don't know what the history of that is with regards to granting permission to give away a city event, which it was because Ruby ran it for six years. So, anyway, I think it's time to take it back. And I fully support the pet parade becoming a city-sponsored event with the Recreation Department organizing it and running it. And as to the new events for the ambassadors, summer lights, I think in all fairness, they should reapply for 23, 24. It is only fair. Other applications, because they were submitted late, were denied. And I, I don't know, you guys would have to find justification to let them move forward with their other events that they want. But again, as far as a pet parade, let's do it. It is a cute event. And coming somewhat out of COVID, I think it would bring smiles to a lot of people, big and small, and perhaps provide a couple of hours where we could all forget our troubles and embrace happiness. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Neither hand is raised. Mr. Mayor.
Right. Thank you. And so, we'll now go to the consent agenda. And I'll ask council for any items to be pulled from the consent agenda. I'm not seeing any, anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent agenda item.
I see no hands raised. Mr. Mayor.
I'm happy to move to approve the consent agenda. And I would also like to thank Ms. Jennifer Pope for all. thank Ms. Jennifer Pope for all of her lovely reporting that was included.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So consent agenda approved five zero to Smith and Emilio absent. All right. Well, real quickly, what we just did was approve council minutes from April twentieth. We've approved a resolution declaring the results of the April twelfth special election. That was for the half percent sales tax. We have approved a resolution authorizing examination of transactions and use tax records. And we have adopted a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for the half percent sales tax, which should be effective in October. And, and thank you to the voters for voting for that. We've also received third quarter purchase order report, a treasurer's quarterly report, a worker's compensation report and budget report and capital improvement budget report. And thank you to our finance staff for all those reports. Very welcome. We've also received a report from the city manager on local emergency actions of which there were none. And we've approved the appointment of Anna Moreland to the administrative enforcement hearing officers panel. And lastly, we've received minutes from the traffic safety commission. And that concludes the consent agenda. We're now on to item twelve A fiscal year twenty twenty-one capital improvement plan. Is Ms. Halby online? Yes, welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Bear with me a moment here. All right. Looking for confirmation that you can see that.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. This item is a recap of our fiscal year twenty twenty-one capital improvement plan. Before I jump into the presentation, I just want to quickly state that this recap will be more brief than the previous recaps that we've brought to city council in the past. This presentation will just provide a very high level overview of what we've completed in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The AR, the agenda report, various attachments are robust and include a variety of details. I do want to draw your attention to attachment three, which has, in my opinion, some very powerful before and after photos that highlight some of the work that was completed as a part of this CIP. So with that, the recommendation is to receive the report. Our fiscal year twenty twenty-one CIP was comprised of twenty-eight projects, seven of which were derived from the general fund and twenty-one from our various non general fund sources. At the end of the fiscal year, we take a look at all of our CIP projects and all of the work performed and we classify our projects with various statuses. The first is complete. That means we've successfully executed the project in the fiscal year. Complete and carried forward is a status that applies to our multi-year kind of larger scale projects where we've completed the scope of work that we intended to complete in the current fiscal year. And then we budgeted for the next phase of work in the subsequent CIP. And then the last status is carried forward. In this instance, the scope of work was not completed in the current fiscal year and the project and the remaining budget has been carried forward into the next fiscal year to allow for completion. So of our seven general fund projects, five were deemed complete. One was carried forward. Again, this is a status that applies to our multi-year projects. Sorry, complete and carried forward. And then one was carried forward. Some quick highlights related to our general fund projects. We completed a significant amount of pavement maintenance and rehabilitation. This includes crack and slurry seal of over five hundred thousand square feet of roadway. And this is an important maintenance treatment to preserve our roadways. We also completed the design and engineering bid process, construction contract award and the commencement of construction for our road rehabilitation project, which addressed over a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet of roadway. We secured over seven hundred thousand dollars of additional grant funding for our Point Pinos coastal trail project. This was essential because it helped us bridge the remaining funding gap and commence construction in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We also completed the trash enclosure and installed three solar lights in the Candy Cane Lane neighborhood. So for our non general fund projects, we had a total of twenty-one. Of the twenty-one, nine were deemed complete. Three were completed and carried forward. Again, this applies to our multi-year larger scale projects. And then nine were carried forward. I do want to quickly note that some of these carry forward projects had equipment and material shipping delays as a result of the pandemic and the supply chain issues. We were also furloughed for the full duration of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So despite these challenges, we were able to make a bunch of progress on a number of the projects that were carried forward and that really teed us up to complete a lot of those projects at the start of the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Some quick highlights related to our non general fund projects. We completed the library renewal project. Hooray. Huge accomplishment there. We did some vital facility improvements. Got our replacements at the community center, HVAC replacements at the Museum of Natural History. We did significant sewer infrastructure improvements at various locations throughout the city as a result of multiple projects that are listed on our non general fund sheets. But in total, that was seven thousand linear feet of sewer line replacement and forty-three manholes that were either rehabilitated or replaced. Again, we made significant progress on our large scale multi-year projects. Those are grant funded ASBS project, our sewer collection system master plan projects, Point Pinos. And lastly, we made some safety and pedestrian improvements at Pine and Early, which was something that had been discussed for years. So we were able to execute and complete that project. And with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to be answering questions.
Do we have any public comment?
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor?
I just, for information purposes, how many people do we have on Zoom?
We have seventeen attendees.
Okay, great. Thank you. One in person and an unknown number of people on watching channel twenty-five cable and we appreciate them all. Okay, council, Mayor Protem McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this update. Obviously lots of gratitude to our public works team and Director Go. I'm really pleased to be on the council, be part of the council that funded and completed the Point Pinos Trail, the library renewal project, EV charging stations. We did tons of safe routes to schools projects. And then of course sewer works, slurry projects and more. For being in a pandemic and facing economic uncertainty, I'm really grateful to our public works team for being innovative and being able to maneuver through those challenges like Ms. Hallaby had mentioned. And also all, doing all of this and still providing excellent service to our residents. So thank you also to the city manager for guiding staff to stay on course pertaining to our city goals and strategies. And lastly, I would like to express gratitude to my colleagues for supporting this work and staying committed to our council goals and core values. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Well, that was wonderfully stated, Mayor Protem. So thank you. And I, I share all those sentiments. I, I find public works and watching you, watching you all just get your, your sheet in order and your tasks and you guys just constantly are working all over the town. And the, the trail project is definitely going to be my favorite for years to come. It's, it, it is transformed every time I go down there. It's so impressive and really an improvement. And so thank you for all that you do, Joyce, and to your whole department. So thank you.
Councilmember Pedori?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to echo the same comments. Thank you, Public Works, for all that you're doing as part of TMC. I know that every year there are excellence awards that we, that are called for nominations. And I look forward to seeing Pacific Grove in that list. That Point Pinos Trail for sure is, is very eye catching. And I, I know that a lot of people have already commented that it's going wonderfully well. So thank you.
And I'll just echo all the comments from my colleagues. The work was done under difficult circumstances, obviously, and it's much appreciated. And so with that, we've received the report. We'll go on to the next item, which is thirteen A concept review, a commercial district vacancy tax. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I'm going to turn this item over to Mr. Nicholas Moreland, who is our EDC chair. I believe Mr. Moreland is online. I see his screen. Mr. Moreland, are you able to activate your camera tonight?
Yes, one second.
A little faster than I thought we might tonight. So might have caught Mr. Moreland a little bit off guard. There he is, Mr. Moreland. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of our city council. I am speaking in tonight on behalf of the Economic Development Commission. It was on February tenth that a motion was passed to ask the city council to create a subcommittee to explore the concept of a vacant storefront tax for the city's downtown district. If it was deemed advantageous for the city, it is asked that it would come back to the city council and eventually pose a future ballot measure for the voter decision. What we are hoping to do and have a target for this would be a taxable commercial space that is kept vacant for more than a hundred and eighty-two days. For an example, there are cities that have done this, such as San Francisco and could be used as a model looking at potentially a two hundred and fifty dollar pour, a street facing linear foot ground floor retail space. As an example, what we are hoping though is to emphasize that this would be a subcommittee for your group to explore the validity and how this would impact Pacific Grove specifically. I do want to emphasize that there are a large emphasis on creating partnerships with the, with our retail shops and our commercial businesses in the city with the Economic Development Commission this year. And I wanted to highlight that this is part of that partnership along with that carrot and stick. So we have a lot of carrots that we're working on this specific year. For example, we have a vacant storefront program that's currently, we're going to be speaking about tomorrow. We have a subcommittee that's already been reviewing it. And it is looking at things such as waiving fees or reimbursing businesses that open long term in vacant downtown storefronts. So it would provide that financial incentives. It would also potentially look at refundable tax credits up to ten thousand dollars or even more so go further. And we would provide, if you come into a vacant storefront, that it would provide a grant to help subsidize in your first year of business, which is often most difficult. Additionally, we're building on those programs as well of looking at how do we incentivize and partner with underrepresented populations and women, women owned businesses. Right now, again, we're going to be giving an update at tomorrow's meeting for the EDC. I'm looking at potential two five thousand dollar grants for people who fall within those categories that would have an application reviewed by the EDC for businesses six months and older with an annual revenue of less than a million dollars. We're looking at renewing our facade improvement program that has historically been successful in the city and how the EDC may provide some of its allocated monies towards that program. And then finally helping with that final element of the partnerships of knowing that filling the vacancies for people to work within your stores can be difficult if you do not have that early childcare support. And so right now, we're also going to provide an update tomorrow at our meeting about what types of things the EDC and city at large can be doing to look at and tackle that challenge. So we can partner with the, the, the places in our city that need that support. So with all of that in mind, this is an ask for the city council to take that other element of that partnership that we're putting in those incentives, those dollars that support. And we're asking as well from those who are coming into the city and who have been here, who have a long term, long term vacant storefronts to explore and to review the impacts that such a tax would have by means of a subcommittee. Thank you very much for your time.
Do we have public comment?
Good evening, council. Again, my name is Jenny McWordo and I'm the CEO of the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I did send an email to the council. So I want to thank you for considering our advocacy on this item with deep respect for the chair and for my fellow EDC commissioners. The chamber was in opposition to this part of this program, which is the vacancy tax. And for the reasons that I stated in my email, I know that you all read it. Thank you. We are way more in favor for the incentive portion of this program, the vacancy storefront program that we're talking about tomorrow night. So definitely in favor of that, not in favor of this tax for the reasons stated in my email. So thank you. We urge the council to oppose this part of the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, Malamar. It's so good to see everybody in person. I'm heavily involved in this topic and I will share with you that I've been working with city staff and developers and commercial property owners. And the dilemma is truly chapter twenty-three point thirty-one, your commercial and industrial zoning that talks about what we can do in our downtown buildings. Prime example would be, we've had a physician who wanted to use the basement for industrial zoning where he would be able to manufacture some of his creams. Well, that's a prohibited use. You know, currently I'm working with a developer who would like to rent the basement of his building for storage. You know, there's really no reason to have seven thousand square feet in a basement. And again, you know, that's a prohibited use. So I think we need to look at what are some of the uses that are prohibited and perhaps allow some of them. I would like to also report that the second largest vacant space in downtown Pacific Grove has been leased as of yesterday. That is really exciting news and it's been vacant for three years. The one that's going to be a little bit challenging is the Hamburg's building. That's the largest vacant store in town and that's twenty-one thousand square feet. And unless we repurpose it and unless we allow certain uses, that building isn't going anywhere. The other building that just came up is the Bank of America. So realistically, while the EDC says there's an increase in vacancy, there's really a decrease in vacancy. I salute the people of Pacific Grove, the city of Pacific Grove and the developers that brought the Holman Building, the goodies project, and most importantly, the building behind Chu's in Java, which is two oh seven sixteenth. That was a dilapidated building. That was a horrible building and it's fully occupied now. So things are looking up. You know, the EDC referred to San Francisco as a basis for this move. Thank God we don't have anything common with San Francisco. I was there a couple of weeks ago and the reason San Francisco did this is because commercial vacancies in San Francisco attracted graffiti, crime, prostitution and what have you. So we don't have that in Pacific Grove. We're really lucky and blessed. I find taxation to be punitive. And I really appreciate Councilmember Pedori, when he first ran, he talked about collaboration. I still have your promotional material. It was all about getting together and working together. And I think taxation is the wrong way to go. I would like to thank you for your service.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment?
We do. We have two hands by virtual. Debbie Beck?
Welcome.
Good evening, council. Again, first I'd like to thank Mr. Moreland. I sat with him on the EDC when I was the chair. I do believe the EDC needs to go back and work on ideas on how to generate business and not tax the generational property owners. I like his ideas, but those were ideas that EDC has been holding for two years. I like his ideas, but those were ideas that EDC has been holding for two years, and nothing took place with those. Including, we had a budget of thirty-five thousand dollars that was not spent, and I believe we're coming to the end of that. A business recently opened in Pacific Grove by a female, and when she went to ask for the we kind of shared what, you know, that she, there was some funding available. We were told an ordinance had to be generated. So the facade improvement, all of that has been discussed for the past two years. When I was on EDC, suggestions were made that have not been implemented. And if we want businesses in town, we as a city need to draw in businesses, not tax the property owner. Due to our lack of outdated EDC city website, which was recently updated, which, again, the data had been provided over the past two years. Talk to the property owners about placing artwork, et cetera, in the buildings until they can find a tenant. Make our business district more appealing to attract a potential business wanting to open up shop in town. This should be a group effort, and by recommending taxing a commercial property only owner certainly doesn't feel like a team effort to me. I would like to hear what our city Chamber of Commerce, along with the EDC, has done to generate more business to our community before imposing a tax. We are not San Francisco. We are small-town Pacific Grove, and everyone needs to remember that. I'm not in favor of taxing commercial building owners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wendy Giles.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'd like to echo what Jenny, Mo, and Debbie have just presented before you, and I am against taxing generational property owners like myself. And the reason, I really want to just wait in here for a second and let and and remind everyone, even though our building at five ninety-one Lighthouse generally is at a hundred percent occupancy. I'd like just to remind everyone that a lot of times businesses and and folks that are coming to town that have good ideas, but really just don't have the structure in place to run a successful business based on a lot of other factors. So, you know, I think it's easy to just look at buildings and facades and be like, oh, well, that building is empty, you know. That's the property. The property owner is charging too much money, or the property owner is doing this. It's really, there's two sides to that story. So I hope everyone will consider that. And I'm against taxing the property owners. I think that's a bad idea. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes virtual public comment, Mayor.
I will bring it back to Council. Council comments. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So if I understand, the idea from the EDC is to have council form recommend that we form a subcommittee to explore putting this on the ballot. Was there a subcommittee formed by the EDC that has a list of kind of pros and cons? Or is that is that the work that you didn't really want to do that if 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 council was not going to be in favor of it? Because I guess that that's my question. I I I'm kind of wondering what will come out of this exploratory work by a subcommittee as to what what the pros and cons are by by the taxation ballot measure. So I that question is for Nicholas.
Thank you very much for that question. We often do take on the task of subcommittees for most of our other agenda reports. However, for this one, we did decide to ask City Council to take on that role because it ultimately needs to be approved by City Council to be on a a vote to go to the to the entire city. So therefore, with that end result in mind, that that's why we took that action.
Okay.
But the answer is no, we have not taken a subcommittee. I want to try and answer that part.
That makes sense. And I sort of what I was deducing in my head, but I just wanted to hear hear it said. I I actually am not in favor of of a subcommittee at this time. I think that we have a lot of as a whole, as council, we've been talking a lot about coming out of COVID and trying to get be as collaborative as we can. Working with parklets, working with businesses, getting things going and and, you know, removing fees and and opening and all of the positive steps that you are working on with the EDC. So I want to continue to work down those angles. And then possibly at a later time, when we're when we've been back into normal operations for a while, possibly consider putting this on the ballot measure. So I'd be curious what others are thinking, but the timing doesn't seem appropriate to me or or needed at the moment.
Mayor Protem McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the EDC for this work. I mean, it it's apparent for the many years, our downtown has and continues to have vacancies. I know that we do have HDL. They're our consultant. But as we have more vacancies, and really now, it's almost more than I can ever recall. I mean, I do think it is appropriate to be having this conversation and being open to trying something else. Vacancy taxes are successful in encouraging owners to rent their spaces. And what San Francisco is doing is they're actually utilizing some of the tax revenue revenues to support small businesses, and I actually really like that in their program. And so in the end, they're having less vacancies, a robust downtown, and investing in small businesses. So also in Article twenty-nine of the San Francisco Business and Tax Regulation Code, one of their findings was vacant storefronts and otherwise vibrant neighborhood commercial districts degrade the urban environment and reduce the quality of life in those neighborhoods, particularly when storefronts stay empty for extended periods of time. Further, the resulting blight negatively impacts other small businesses in the area by discouraging foot traffic and eroding the character and uniqueness of the communities. So that really spoke to me, whether you're in San Francisco or Pacific Grove or whatever city you're in, if you're surrounded by empty businesses or, you know, we have predominantly real estate businesses on our downtown, it 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 isn't supportive for other small businesses. And so I think that, I mean, unless we want to be a real estate downtown, you know, I mean, I would love to see, and I've heard this for many, many years, just more diverse businesses. We want businesses where, and I think actually we're seeing that with the parklets. People are eating out, or if they're on a waitlist, they're actually walking around and hopefully going into the handful of retail businesses that we have on Lighthouse Avenue. So I am open to this. Also, something else that other cities are doing is they're doing vacancy taxes on homes, sort of similar to commercial businesses. And so these are homes that sit empty for six months or more. They're classified as underutilized in neighborhoods. And, you know, being that we are really turning into a second, third, fourth home city, I would be interested in learning more about vacancy tax on homes and perhaps having that a concept discussion later. So I would be I do agree that the timing is not right coming out of the pandemic. But I do think that we need to do something, and we can't just, you know, I appreciate the creativity that the EDC has brought because what we're doing is not working. So, thank you.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, first, I'm always glad to see one of our boards committees or commissions reaching out to the Council and engaging with us. So keep that up. I I appreciate that quite a bit. And I also keep working on the carrots. I think that's important for Council to review. But I don't want to see taxation being used as punishment. And I think that's kind of the essence of what we're suggesting with this. I would suggest, and others have mentioned it, you know, the Chamber and then Mr. Omar, that we we start looking at what our municipal code allows as far as permitted use, permitted uses within the downtown, and to perhaps expand on what those permitted uses are. I would much rather see business owners deal with their perspective business owners, the property owners dealing with the business owners to develop the plans that they seem or they believe is best for the city. I don't want to dictate that from the City Council. It's the City Council's is in control of the zoning code, and we should review what uses are appropriate by outreach through the property owners and the business owners. I'd like to encourage the Chamber and the EDC to to do that, and then come to Council with the list of suggestions on what permitted uses they would like to see expanded. I think that's the way to to do that, and I hope the EDC in the Chamber will pursue that. Thank you.
Councilmember Peduri.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Moreland, for bringing this. I always like it if there's something new on the agenda. So thank you. I so my view is that I'll go back to Mr. Omar, what what he mentioned about collaboration. But my view is that I've heard a few folks speak that they should not be used. We should not be taxed. It is a punishment. In in your review of this agenda item, have you seen an actual use case within the city where this would actually apply? So is there a legitimate establishment or a property in town where we could actually apply this? Because what I think is we can, we can certainly collaborate with the Chamber, the rest of the folks in the town to come to an agreement on what this needs to be and who it would apply to. It could be that certain establishments have valid reasons on this, but maybe others may may not. And and we need to look at into those cases where I wouldn't exactly call it punitive damages, but but still a way to entice them to move forward with whatever they have rather than the store being vacant. So my question to you, long-winded question to you, Mr. Moreland, do you have any examples of properties in town where this would apply?
Thank you very much for your question. We do not have that list available at this time. I'm sure that I think maybe Missile Halloran or someone I know on, or maybe Mr. Harvey, or someone of his staff would definitely be able to provide an accurate list. However, we we are coming to this without those types of trying to dictate to City Council who it applies to, who it doesn't apply to those types of things. What we really wanted to focus in on was to allow you the full gamut of opportunity to explore in the subcommittee what the actual details are to create a tax for long-term, long-term vacancies. Thank you. So at this time, the answer is is no at this time. However, I I'm happy to request that either to the appropriate staff person who might be able to provide an accurate list. So thank you.
Okay, got it. So I'm generally open to the idea, and I know, like, if you're planning to bring this to a tax measure for, say, November, then we need to work against a certain deadline. I believe it's like July or something. So it gives us a really small window of opportunity to actually connect with everybody to kind of hash things out, especially when it's a subcommittee group, which is a voluntary kind of like initiative. So I'm supportive of the idea. I just think we need more time for this to come into fruition. And I'm open to reviewing the list that that is being presented by the city manager or the city staff to see how we can work collaboratively with the Chamber of Commerce to take things forward. So thank you.
I'd like to also thank Mr. Moreland and the EDC for bringing up ideas and working on improving our local businesses and our commercial districts. However, this is not the idea that I can support. I think we need to look at a whole host or maybe even exhaust all the other ideas of supporting our local businesses before we start taking punitive actions such as such as taxes, additional taxes. I'm you know, I I I want to hear more about what the EDC is proposing. I think we we council received emails from both the present and the past presidents of the Chamber of Commerce with some insightful comments. And I just heard one of my colleagues talk about working with the Chamber of Commerce as well as the business owners. And so I would fully support having those dialogue, having that dialogue with those those people and being very specific. I think if anything, I learned from this was that each property has a has a different is special, I, you know, is unique. And so the issues surrounding, how can that particular, a particular property be used for businesses or a business? I think we need dive down to that level of detail to understand our our own downtown. So I I won't be supporting this, but thank you for bringing it forward. Mayor Protem McAdams.
Thank you. I do have one question. When you were going through this, did you reach out to or perhaps did the was was the Chamber able to to share with you what keeps these buildings vacant for years and years and years? And, you know, we are losing Poppy Hall. We're also losing six one nine Lighthouse, which was like a fun little boutique by the International Cafe. So you know, the last thing I want to see, and I think before Poppy Hall moved in, you know, it was vacant for for a really long time. So do do you have an understanding of why these properties sit for years and years and years?
From, so to answer your first question, so first of all, thank you very much for your question. With, we have the the new member of of our council member, excuse me, Mrs. McMurdo. She is a newer member on our committee, and so therefore, we've tried to give her a little bit of that runway to have those communications and to build those relationships. So we have not been able to have that deep dive conversation that I think would be helpful. Should a subcommittee of this move forward to definitely have those conversations, and maybe even it's permitted to ask her or a member of the EDC to be part of that subcommittee. I'm not exactly sure of the rules, but I think that may be allowed. We did have conversations when Miss Chair Debbie Beck from last year with some key stakeholders in those areas. It was a wide range of reasons, as our mayor alluded to as well. However, I think that that would be very wise for the subcommittee to maybe audit or survey or whatever means is necessary to maybe get a good snapshot of what that is. But within the purview of suggesting a subcommittee and not trying to limit your purview, we have not done that. So the answer to your question is no.
Thank you. And then also, just sort of in your exploration, you know, I know that water can be limiting, or if a space was a furniture store, they can't be a restaurant, or there's not enough water. Did that did that come up at all?
Yeah. So the conversations that we had last year, water was an issue. However, what's usually understood is that Pacific Grove does have its water credits. It's a little bit easier in comparison to other moderate counties, specifically our neighbors. The issues that came up was looking at, we had some outdated numbers in terms of what is the average household income. What is our, some of our statistical numbers for the city, I think, were either misnomers or have not that 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 branding of Pacific Grove isn't quite caught up to what we really are today. And so that's why the EDC last year, we did allocate some further funding towards that marketing to have a better and more accurate picture because some of those misnomers from five, ten years ago are still very prevalent when someone either coming in, exploring Pacific Grove, what that may look like. However, what they do find is that our City Council, or City Council, and then also our staff are very helpful and very easy to work with, especially our Chamber of Commerce as well. That was a very positive comment that they that they did share.
Great. Thank you so much. I mean, I really do think that it's important that like what Councilmember Coletti is saying, and also what Mr. Mar said, you know, is that our downtown is able to accommodate business or Mr. Mar said, you know, is that our downtown is able to accommodate business or uses that want to come in. Um, and so I I definitely that think that that um, statement has a lot of value. Um, I know that it's not on the agenda this evening, but perhaps maybe that can um, come back at another time or uh, Mr. Moreland, when you go back to the EDC tomorrow and report out, I mean, maybe that's something that that you can say. I mean, I'm not sure that um, you know, I know that we don't allow um, uh, fast food, but are we missing out on Chipotle or like a uh, upscale pizza, something that's a chain, you know, maybe some ideas um, like that, that that would sort of broad, you know, like what Councilmember Coletti was saying, just sort of um, open up that um, the use uh, downtown. So I definitely um, think that that is a good discussion. And again, I really appreciate you coming to the council, being brave, you know, bring bringing an innovative idea. Um, I really am excited about that and and that is important. So keep your ideas coming. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I I'll add to, I, it sounds like um, you are going back to the EDC tomorrow and and so on and so forth. So I I definitely want to say, you know, while this, I don't think it's the right time to propose a subcommittee for a taxation. I think uh, it is the right time to be doing these deep dives, having these conversations. Yes, they've been going on for a while. We have uh, a lot, some, some great data that's collected and there's more to collect. And I think that council, it's gonna come to a really, you know, forefront for me as as like, how can we support? How can we get along? How can we say yes to ideas that are out there, that are being presented to us um, for different uses, potentially taking that 21,000 square foot and dividing it up. Uh, fast food, you know, there's a lot of places that someone would not think is a fast food, like the ice cream shop. Revival is be, it's considered a chain because there's two of them, but yet it's very unique to this location and they, I do think they want to come to town. So the sooner we can and um, try to approve those types of accommodations and changes, uh, I think council would would want to do that. And then lastly, we have the budget conversation coming up next and over the next couple of weeks and month, we're going to be talking about allocating some additional funding across our buckets and appropriate areas within the community and and I know recreation is at the top of my list, but so is this. So revitalizing downtown. If there is a funding request, be very specific from the EDC board of what what amounts and what for and what will it do? Because there's actually, I think, going to be funds to program in that direction um, sooner than later. And and I'd love to have something to um, to program it for. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing uh, anyone wanting to make a motion. So I think we'll just leave it as, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Moreland, and thank you to the EDC, and we look forward to hearing more from you in the future. All right, we're now on to item 13B, the five-year fiscal forecast and budget. Ms. Hannah. Welcome.
You're on mute, Ms. Hannah.
You're on mute, Mr. Hannah. Ms. Hannah.
Dory. You're on mute.
Okay. Um, this is the the five-year forecast. Typically, it is presented in uh, February. It's a little bit, uh, it's it's been deferred primarily due to um, waiting for the results of the sales tax measure. Now that we have that information, we're a little bit further along in the budget process. So some of the numbers that you see for fiscal year 22, 23 are used as the basis for the proposal rather than the current year. Um, just because we've already done some of the preliminary budget work. And just to to confirm that this is preliminary budget work that you'll be seeing, um, the proposed budget has not been developed. It's provided for informational purposes as well as to receive any comments or feedback from council at this meeting.
Excuse me, um, can I interrupt? I I can't hear her very well. My my hearing is not that great. Is there a way to turn her out, Sandra?
Uh, can you hear me better now? I could speak louder.
No, I think it's the speakers in this room are not very loud.
Well, it's the Zoom because these microphones are
Loud, yeah, that's true.
For some reason, the Zoom um, input is slow.
Let me see if I can check with the our amp guys.
I can hear you uh, well enough to continue, but if someone could could try to turn you up, that would be great.
Ms. Hannah.
Yes.
Do you have a headset?
Um, actually, I do not.
Okay.
Oh, that's better now.
I I'm, I I can lean in further. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So um, from the very beginning, um, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council and members of the public. The item that I have before you today is the city's five-year forecast. It's typically presented in February prior to the prep preparation of the budget. However, if it it was deferred due to the pending um, sales tax measure, now that we have that information, it has been incorporated into a preliminary fiscal year 22, 23 budget. And this will serve as the basis for the forecast. And just as a reminder, the forecast is um, is not a budget. It's a general in in nature. It reveals revenue expenditure trends over time. And it assumes no other event intervene, um, which could be um, the one that reminds us most currently is a pandemic. We did not anticipate that. We did not forecast for it. While we try to plan disasters, loss of major taxpayers are not included in it and there are no additional hotel revenues or new hotels included in the budget. It, I mean, in the forecast, it attempts to identify outcomes. If nothing changes, it provides an order of magnitude feel for the general fund's ability to continue services and preserve fiscal sustainability. Um, should be reviewed as a work and it should be viewed as a work in progress. The key assumptions that were built into the baseline fiscal year 22, 23 assumptions were included as three-quarters of Measure A revenues or $975,000. The anticipated implementation date is is going to be October of of this, this next fiscal year, 2021. We have also added $1 million in an ARPA supplement. And in one of the upcoming slides, I'll I'll share with you why some of the reasons that we need to use these funds. There was a question posed, why can't we have all the 1.8, 1.84 million dollars in apply? Some of it is needed to still continue to assist to subsidize the general fund as well as support some new expenditures. The full year of Measure A revenues begins in February 23, 24. And for the forecasted years, it's anticipated to um, increase the revenues by by 2.6%. In fiscal year 2023, some initial items that have been programmed in include a 3% employee cost of living increase, which is estimated to be $300,000. There is also an increase none in the unfunded liability payment of $400,000. Within your agenda packet, there is um, a chart that shows the dollar amounts as well as the increases in both the unfunded liability payment as well as a change in the pension obligation bond payment. There is also an an initial uh, projection for a class and compensation study for the unrepresented and department head units or positions that have not been studied. Um, and I believe this study has not occurred since 2017. So while a lot of the 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 prior bargaining units have had studies, this particular group has not. There has also been $100,000 um, placed in it to begin work on the general plan amendment. You'll also see in fiscal year 2023, a decreased pension obligation bond payment and in the forecasted years 24, 25 through 26, 27 increases of 2.7%. This chart chart shows the pension obligation bond and unfunded liability that has been incorporated into the forecast. Uh, a couple of points to note is that you can see the drop of plus to $900,000 between fiscal year 22, 23 and fiscal years 23, 24 in the pension obligation bond payment. And then you, when, if you look at the amounts of the PERS rates, you'll see that there are some pretty substantial increases in fiscal year 2021 to to fiscal year 2022 as well as as in 2023. Um, the most current one being $400,000. But if you look out into some of the forecast years, um, you're seeing that we have passed the the largest ramp-up period, at least based on their current projections, where we're going to get increases in the unfunded liability payment. However, they're not going to be as steep as they have been in the past or are not projected to be. So this slide um, sums up some of the changes. It's a representation of the information that is included in your agenda packet. It's provided more in a visual format to try to explain some of the rationale for the year-over-year changes and the unfunded li- and you, the use of the ARPA supplement. So if you look at fiscal year 21, 22 as the base year, just to um, put things in perspective, we had $28.2 million in expenses, which is the the blue bar. And we had $26.6 billion in revenue. We had to use $181,000 from a library dona- donation bequest to assist us in covering those expenses as well as supplement with $1.4 million in ARPA funds to cover operating costs as well as an additional $400,000 that was used to fund capital improvements and capital outlay items. And so looking at that, when you compare it to fiscal year 20 22, 23, you'll see a rise in revenues of about $2.2 million, which includes the $975,000 estimated in Measure A tax revenues as well as general revenue increases. But you'll also see that expenses have increased in this, in that, this upcoming fiscal year by 29.6 million. That's due to some of the regular increases as well as some of the items that I've shown on the other slide, which include the unfunded liability payment, the cost of living increases as well as uh, addition of the general plan. And there are also some general increases in internal service fund payments. And if we look at how much that we are missing um, to fill that gap, we need an additional $1 million if we are, if we are able to fund that. That also funds $500,000, the $500,000 a minimum maintenance of effort contribution for capital projects as well as funding approximately $220,000 in potential capital and capital outlay items that have yet to be approved. Of that $220,000 that is included um, in an exhibit with this um, agenda report, $75,000 of that has been pulled from that pool to assist with funding the Del Monte Storm Drain Improvement Project, which was originally projected and funded at $150,000. However, when you'll see in this next um, in the upcoming capital improvement budget presentation, they're going to need additional funds to complete that project. In the forecasted years 23, 24, you'll see the reduction in pension obligation bonds and how it allows the city to cover some of the expenses plus has additional funds left to be programmed. So if you see the um, yellow line for revenues or the tan line, you'll see that there's a gap between the dollar amount of the expenditures. That is largely to the pension bond payment being reduced. And within that space, in the next four years, there's approximately 664,000 or $525,000 in in money that is unprogrammed that could be used for council discretion for projects or other items. Um, and that, the other piece where you see 525,000 is that reserves um, require a percentage of expenditures. So when that expenditure increases, on average, 525 would be available. So with that, um, next steps, it provides staff with any direction or comments for the proposed fiscal year 22, 23 budget. Consider options for additional American Rescue Plan Act funds at a later meeting or provide us with some preliminary feedback. The initial projected allocation is $843,000. The community survey closes on May 13, 2022. When you see the um, proposed capital improvement project budget um, at an upcoming council meeting, it will also show some unfin- funded uh, projects that could be considered for ARPA funding. In addition, there isn't, there isn't a choice that needs to be made right before the budget is adopted. We can retain those funds and fund balance to allow council additional time to make decisions on how those funds could be used. And then the following step would be in June, when we have the first reading of the proposed budget. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No virtual hands raised, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, just one. Andrew Kay.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Hannah for this presentation. I I did just want to point out to the council that the unfunded PERS liability is right now taking 18% of the budget. If you take the 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 chart that uh, Ms. Hannah showed and you divide that by the uh, operating budget, that takes 18% of the budget in the next. And then when you get to the 26, 27 year, you're up to 20% of the budget, 20.5% of the budget. So every time we give a raise, every time we increase salaries, we increase the PERS debt. Uh, the numbers here uh, on the chart, I believe, said it was 7%. Uh, last uh, August, there was an article in the Wall Street Journal and the uh, state of California, uh, representative for PERS admitted at that time uh, that they would never get more than 6.5%. And they just hadn't flow flowed that down to the uh, to the cities. This is before the stock market has dropped, waited, has dropped that. So that should keep that in mind. Also, taking a look at the the cost that we have here, we have uh, five, $400,000 for PERS. We want to give a raise of $300,000. And then we're spending $140,000. So right out of the first year's uh, sales tax, we're taking $846,000. Uh, and that doesn't leave much left out of that 1.1 million that we passed the sales tax for for the other things that we said that we were going to do. Uh, I appreciate our staff. I appreciate how hard they're working, but reality needs to be set in there. Uh, and and I think that we, when you said that the cost for the raise was 300,000, I don't believe that was fully burdened. I don't believe that it takes into the out years. I'm not particularly picking on this. I'm just trying to point this out. Uh, we're a small city. We need to be mindful of our budgets. We haven't funded the roads up to where the uh, consultant said we should uh, for years. We haven't taken care of Jataqua Hall. There's a bell in front of the fire department that is being held up, but two-by-fours, which is a safe, could be a safety hazard. There are many things around the city that need to be taken care of. And um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No other virtual hands, Mr. Mayor.
I bring it back to council.
Bringing back the council.
I just saw one raised, sorry. Inga Lawrence and Deimer?
Welcome.
Thank you. I was just kind of wondering, it sounds like ARPA funds have already been allocated and spent before even the city survey is done. Maybe I heard that wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I, I'm, I'm a little optimistic. I mean, looking at the forecast, it, it appears that out in 26, 27, we're going to be growing a reserve balance and even going beyond our reserve policy. And so I think things are looking good on that front, and I'm very pleased to see that. Some of the things that, that had happened during COVID and now with the tax measure have impacted things. And so I'm, you know, generally pleased with, with a lot of this. I think that we're in good financial condition right now. It appears to me, based on this report. And I do think that, you know, Mr. Kubica raised a couple of points. The streets upkeep, yes, I think, you know, if we're going to be, have a little bit of room, we could work on that. Because that's something that goes back a long time to the beginning of the time when I was on council and we talked about the numbers, the county index of paving. And so we, we want to get as, as high as we can, and we've had items come forward on that. I can't tell you the exact year, but I think it was before the pandemic. And we, we had items come forward when we were talking about numbers in various places in the cities. So, you know, attacking that kind of stuff, making better envelopes for the streets and for ADA compliance and all that. So, and the sidewalks, connecting the sidewalks. So we've been working on that for years. And it has, I've seen it across the street from my current house. I've, I've seen efforts by the city to pave and create curbs and create sidewalks. And I see the kids walking home on the sidewalks, and one of them is mine now, walking home. So I think we can go do that kind of stuff with this, with the money that we have. And, and also go after city assets also, such as Chautauqua Hall and other city assets that we might be able to expend funds to improve. So I'm, I'm also really, I'm not saying let's go out spending on a spending spree. I'm just saying I'm glad to see that we are going to have the resources to help with some of these issues that we've had for years. And so I'm, I'm pleased that we're in good financial condition. We can make our, pay our people. We can pay our pension obligations and we can keep moving forward. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim McAdams?
Thank you, and thank you to our accounting department and team for, for pulling this together with so many moving parts. So I, I definitely see and appreciate the flexibility. I'm really pleased to see the $100,000 for the general plan amendment. I know that we have been talking about that for a long time. And so it would be nice, it'll be nice to, to get those steps going. I am disappointed to see the second tranche of the ARPA funds not being committed fully to a community investment, as we've discussed. I would like to see the council move in the direction of using 1 million towards recreation parks and community-based improvements. The Recreation Department recently completed their amazing inventory, so we have that to use. And we also have not yet received the final survey results. So I think it's important to, to really understand what our community, how they want that money used. I mean, I, I understand that some of it needs to go towards the general fund, but I would like to see those numbers reversed. As far as salaries goes, I mean, I, I tend to be conservative. I try to be conservative with the salaries, but we are really in a unique labor market. And, and we're struggling to retain employees and we're struggling to hire new employees. And so as much as I would like to, you know, not increase salaries, I, I mean, I, I really, for me, to support our city manager and to support our HR in the difficult recruiting that they're going through, that would not be in the city's best interest, I think. And I really, we are in unique times and we live in a very expensive city. And, and I think that our salaries need to be supportive of the high cost of living. And really, within, you know, you can commute 45 minutes to an hour and make a significant more amount of money. And that's what we're competing with, and it's very difficult. So as much as I don't like to see the salary increases, I completely understand them and, and I think that, that they are valid and warranted. So the five-year, I mean, I, I agree, it, it is uplifting. I am pleased that we are at our reserves policy limit. We weren't for, for quite a while, and it wasn't looking good. And it's better and, and it's, it's going to get better. So I would like to thank the residents that supported and voted two times for the sales tax measure. That is very important for our city and those revenues are very important. So for me, I will vow to, to be diligent with spending that money. And I, and I know as a council, we all, we all have the best interest in the city at the forefront. So thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hannah, in your department for this, this budget forecast workshop. I, I now I feel like I'm really loud. I, and thank you for the report, wherever you are. You're not on the screen anymore. I agree with, you know, the ARPA money was, is 1.8 million. And so what, what I'm seeing here is that we need to spend about a million of it to, for all the things that you've listed, the general fund for salary increases, for the $100,000 for the general plan update. And I think all of those are very prudent, and I support the decisions and in programming the money that way. You mentioned in your comments about having time to let the survey complete, and I fully support that till May 13th, and it's getting great results. We get the live updates. And the, I, I do want to give great attention to the unfunded public works list as well. Those are also good ideas. I guess for my colleagues, I want to take that, you know, now $843,000 that we would have to program from the ARPA money. And I know that's not what we're discussing tonight per se, but, you know, consider taking our time with it, you know, dividing it up into appropriate buckets and, and programming it not in, in conjunction with passing our fiscal budget. I think the way you have the fiscal budget programmed is, is fantastic. I don't have any changes for it tonight. And I, but I do look forward under your guidance and, and leading us through programming the ARPA money as, as well, and taking our time, getting a lot, the, the city input. And even, you know, some of the ideas I have in mind is if we allocate a certain amount to recreation, it's, we don't have to have specifically all of what those items are at this moment. You know, recreation could be given a certain amount of money, and then they have, you know, a year or however long to spend it and program it. So we'll, we'll have those discussions at a later date. But seeing that there's still quite a bit in the balance for the ARPA money is, I'm positive. And I think tonight, it's a workshop. I, I don't know if, if we're gonna, our recommended action is still just to receive the report. But I'll be ready to approve it once it comes back in June. So thank you.
Councilmember Clitty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Hannah, in your forecast, are you integrating any increase in TOT revenue? For instance, we've been told, council's been told that we can expect up to 1 million to 1.5 million in TOT from the Pacific Grove Hotel over the next five years.
You're on mute, Tori.
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, there have been no, no revenues program for the new hotel. It is just our existing hotels and short-term rentals that are included in the forecast.
Okay, so the forecast doesn't integrate any prospective or potential TOT increases from new hotels coming online? Okay, thank you. You mentioned general plan expenditure, general plan update and expenditure of $100,000. What exactly, what component of the general plan are you anticipating that money being spent for?
I'll defer to the city manager on that question. He's been having some conversations with community development and maybe more better able to comment on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Clitty through the mayor, that has not been a determination made. The suggestion is to go at the general plan update in a incremental approach, possibly housing, safety, in order to complete the whole effort, as we've talked before. And I know you know, obviously, it's a million-dollar overall probably effort. But starting off with just an allocation, the council can help us decide, obviously, where, where we start with that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think that's where I was headed with that question. Based on that answer is that a cost will escalate quickly. And if we are going to decide to update our general plan, it'll be a lot more than $100,000, I think. I do take to heart Mr. Kubica's remarks about every time we raise salaries, we're going to raise our exposure to our unfunded actuarial liability, basically our pension debt. So I, in general, am not in favor of increasing salaries. Instead, I think what we might want to do is we might want to start investigating and better recruitment policies or options to get the people in to fill the, the need that apparently is purportedly there. So I'd like to see us really focus on that first. As far as programming the ARPA money, I want to, I definitely want to see what the survey says. My guess is the residents are going to tell us, spend it on infrastructure. I think that's probably, that's what I filled the survey out to say. So, but we'll see. And as far as CIP projects go, Planning Commission recommended the Purple Pipe Project. Basically, what that means is using recycled water to irrigate our coastal parks. And what I like about that project is that it's, it comes with a payoff. The investment in putting in the infrastructure to deliver recycled water for irrigating our coastal parks means we're going to be spending less money for Calam potable water. And Debbie Beck has given council a year's worth of invoices showing how much we do spend for Calam Water, which is significant. And I just think it's the right thing to do, using potable water to irrigate a landscape, just like it doesn't make any sense at the golf course. It doesn't make any sense in our coastal parks either. So I really look forward to advocating for that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Pedori?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hannah, for the presentation and accompanying materials. I, I wanted to mention that we, thanks to us being conservative, we actually were able to survive the COVID-19 pandemic. And we need to keep that in mind, even with, in the future, as we go through these finances. So one of the things that I heard was the unfunded liabilities and essentially the pension obligation bond realizing X amount of money, close to a million dollars a year. My view is that so far, whatever I've researched, it's not going away anywhere. Unfunded liability will continue to be a city problem. It'll continue to grow. There is no solution to it, and whatever Calpers promises, it is still a promise. So my view is that even though we're going to be realizing an extra $1 million or something to that effect in the future years because of the lower obligation bond, we should reserve at least part of that money, if not more, towards paying off the, the obligations. It should serve us well to be conservative there, rather than utilizing all that money. The second thing is around the salary increase, and I agree that inflation is high. Cost of living is high. We need to, the, there is a great resignation going around across the country. It's, I feel it even in my workplace. So we, we need to see, we need to take steps to retain employees as much as we can. And, and for that, for that reason, at least, we should, we should continue to invest in our staff, and I will support that idea. Then finally, I, I would want to mention that one of the big things that has happened this year is the, the sixth housing cycle element related to RENA. And I, I view that to be, there are several things in there, but I view that as we look towards a five-year plan here, we're going to see more, more housing-related issues come to, come to market. There may be more businesses that may require assistance. There may be more residents within PG that may require assistance. And what I would recommend is allocating some, some form of money. It may be a small amount, but it should be a start to, towards providing assistance towards, towards housing-related matters, because that is going to become a critical element as we move forward. But otherwise, I look forward to seeing what the ARPA results are there. And I would agree with Councilmember Coletti, infrastructure would probably be the top, but also be interested to see what, what happens there. But thank you.
I'll echo practically all the comments from my colleagues, so I, I won't repeat them particularly. Thanks, Ms. Hannah, to you and your staff. And, but I do want to come back to the first comments by Councilmember Smith. This, this five-year forecast is very encouraging. And I, I can remember sitting here for many years where the five-year forecast was just all doom and gloom. And of course, it never happened. And we used to hear public come in and say, oh, the city's going bankrupt. And I'm like, well, it's the forecast. It's not going to happen. Well, this time, I think we got it right. Glad to see it. Some of the priorities I heard, or all the priorities I heard, were all good. We'll have to debate that when the budget actually comes, comes to us. The, the only thing that I, I didn't hear mentioned that I'm going to be looking for is the ARPA survey. Granted, yes, we're not going to be able to use the ARPA survey for all sort of nice things to have. We're going to have to use some of the money or a lot of it for things that we really need to do. But I think the survey will give council and staff a good indication of what the community's priorities are. So it, it won't be, it certainly won't be wasted. So thank you to everyone that's responded to the survey, and I look forward to seeing the final results.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you. I have one final follow-up question for Ms. Hannah. How many years do we have left to pay off the golf course clubhouse? This kind of, I think this feeds into the whole forecast question. And how much, how much do we have currently to pay off?
I actually don't have the figures handy for the golf course clubhouse. I can look that up and give that to you.
I believe as a result, or as, to get better financing on the, the loan for the clubhouse, we had to park $2 million, or maybe it was 2.2, in a UMKO. I think, I don't know what kind of, it was some kind of money market account or something. But it might be the point where we owe less on the clubhouse than we have parked in that account. And then it might just make sense to pay off that loan so they can free up that $2 million. So that's just an idea I'll put out there. Thank you.
All right, this item was received the report. Thank you very much. And we have only one item left in the agenda. And we have only one item left in the agenda. It's 10 of eight. Do you want to take a break or keep on going? I think the break people win on this, on the winner. Okay, we'll take a break 10 minutes. We'll return at 8 o'clock. Thank you. Take a recess. All right, well now here our last agenda item. It's 13C Local Water Project Business Plan Peer Review. Mr. Harvey.
I'm going to actually turn this over to our deputy city manager and our assistant city manager. This is their item to present to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, members of the city council, myself, Daniel Go, your Public Works Director, Deputy City Manager, along with Ms. Hannah, your Administrative Services Director, and Assistant City Manager will be making this presentation. Let me share my screen. Very good. Well, I'm super excited, Mayor Peak and members of the city council and city staff that were finally able to present this item. I know it's been some time coming. It's been on and off of meetings. And both myself and Ms. Hannah are just thrilled to be here tonight to present this. So tonight, I'm here to present the Local Water Project Business Plan in conjunction with Ms. Hannah. I'll do the first few slides and then she'll be taking over. So just some brief background on the local water project. The main purpose of the project was to convert wastewater basically for irrigation purposes. In 2010, we kicked off the project with a concept, design, and thought. And that's how the project originated. And that was, we knew that the use of potable water was not sustainable, both environmentally and economically. We knew we had an issue that we needed to resolve. So in 2000, from 2010 to 2015, we derived, like, how can we do this? We came up with an idea of resurrecting the old sewer treatment plant. In 2015, the city issued an RFP for design build of a new plant that could provide irrigation of reclaimed water for our golf course and cemetery. The main funding sources was a $2.5 million grant from the state of California to fund the construction and the design, and then a 1% state loan. In 2018, the construction was completed and the plant began operating. The current operations is the city has an agreement with Perk Water. We have a five-year agreement which commenced in January of 2018. Our primary customers are the golf course, Corso, the cemetery, Point Pinos Lighthouse Grounds, and Truckville. So just some background on the reclaimed water usage. Currently, we're selling the water at about 1 cent, just over 1.10 cents per gallon. It doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're selling 95 acre feet, it adds up. In 2018, we sold 95 acre feet of water. 2019, another 95. In 2020, we had a little bit of a weather, wetter year, so we sold 93. But this last year, in 2021, which is not noted in the business plan, because when we wrote the business plan, we hadn't concluded 2021. But we sold 99 acre feet, more on par to where we need to be with the project. But one of our challenges, the local water project is operating in a deficit, and it's primarily due to lack of sales. We're not selling the water, as I alluded to in the last slide, that we anticipated. Our utility costs are high, and we have debt service on the loan. We also need to make sure we set aside money for reserves. We're going into year five of operations. We need to have money to make sure that we can replace equipment as it's needed to be replaced. So we developed a business plan. And, but prior to that, in October of 2020, staff presented potential options to pursue the local water project. Some of you recall, I brought this forward so we could perform an energy audit. Let's renegotiate the lease with Corso. Let's look into leasing out the facility to maybe a private operator. We could look at it doing in-house operations, basically public works coming in and operating, or do nothing and just, let's keep doing what we're doing and see where we are. At that time, council directed staff to prepare a business plan. The plan was presented to city council in June of 2021. Council directed staff, after they looked at that June plan, to obtain a peer review. And that peer review was to review and evaluate a break-even analysis. Ms. Hannah will get into that in a little bit. So in October of 2021, council authorized an agreement with DTA. DTA, DTA was to evaluate cost, revenue needs, and break-even calculations. They provided a memo to the city dated January 7, 2022. The memo provided peer review of the business plan. DTA determined that the city's analysis is rational, supportable, and consistent with industry practice. And what they're recommending is increased water rates. Work with Corso to increase those rates and try to right the ship. So now I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Hannah, and she's going to go into some of the financials. Thank you, Tori.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Just, just to reiterate, some of Dan's points is, one, it was to assist us. The business plan was developed to assist us in understanding some of the contributing factors and also to provide support to council to see if council is willing to open up negotiations with the golf course, Lassie, to look at some type of rate increase. Some of the immediate operating concerns that are prevalent is the repayment of the interfund loan. We need to get some clarification on, on what kind of terms or what options that we have so we can add that to our year-end financial statements, as well as give more security to the council and the public that there is a full plan to repay that amount. And also to begin the process to achieve ongoing fiscal sustainability. Right now, as Mr. Go has indicated, the, the plant has been running at a deficit, as well as incorporate some of the best practices. When I worked on the Pure Water Monterey Project as their CFO, one of the things that we looked at is building in a reserve requirement for capital equipment into the rate structure, as well as a cash flow reserve to assist us in managing the parameters so we wouldn't have to rely on the main operation. Right now, we have pooled cash, and the local water project has been relying on the city's pooled cash for cash flow circumstances. But most of the city's enterprise funds contain a cash flow reserve to assist with that sustainability and independence. Also, consideration could be a rainy day or a rate stabilization reserve. For when there are drought conditions, we could be We could be bringing in more sales, whereas in some rainy years, the sales may not be an extensive, and that would secure, provide a more even rates. And also to continually evaluate operations. This, this, this business plan that we developed looks at the near term in a more realistic fashion, but also in the long run, it's really provided to show that there are some significant capital improvements that are out there that we have to be concerned about financing. It does need to be evaluated, and perhaps in two or three years, consider a rate study. This is really just to say, hey, here are some solutions to the problem, and this is what we're seeing. And our analysis, as Mr. Go stated, was confirmed with a peer review.
Tori, you're muted, just an FYI.
This is included in the business plan. And what it shows is, is the expenditures being below the revenues that are bringing in, with the exception of when you see the $600,000 inter-fund sewer loan. On average, it has been running close to a $200,000 deficit per year. These numbers were not based on the ending fiscal year forecast, the ending, I'm sorry, the ending fiscal year 2021 numbers. This was what was forecasted during the time the plan was created. It actually ended the year better with a negative $37,000 rather than a negative $93,000. And part of that was the increased sales because it was a drought year. Next slide. What we identified with some of the challenges, it's a new operation. Even with this business plan, we only have three full years of data, and only one year of data that supports drought conditions. There is a cap placed on the golf course water sales, which prohibits us from receiving full cost recovery. And there initially, there were some unplanned water treatment costs. We initially provided $79,000 from the general fund to cover costs that were not covered by the loan proceeds. As Mr. Go mentioned, demand was not as high as in the original model. And we do need to recover the existing deficit and make it more sustainable. The opportunities that we have are working with Corisco to potentially remove or adjust the cap, account for a full cost recovery when developing a rate, whether it's through a gradual ramp up of rates, and during that period, supplementing with water entitlement sales, seeking cost reduction strategies, which Mr. Go is looking at, and considering applying a percentage amount from water entitlement sales to pay off the $600,000 loan from the sewer fund, as well as exploring other alternatives. Next slide. One of the things that we wanted to look at in, in the business plan was trying to see what type of cash flow the local water project would need to sustain operations. Based on the three years of data that we had, we've seen, like, there's a trough between December and, and March during more of the, the rainy or, or cooler months. And during that period, we need about $250,000 in cash flow to help sustain the operation. Next slide. This incorporates some of the capital replacement and membrane items that were identified by the original engineer. And what we've done is place those costs within this table, and it outlines what the replacement schedule for some of the costs. So you'll see in the assumed years one through five, there's approximately $90,000 that were identified. We adjusted based on a CPI index to inflate that amount since the engineering estimate was done, because this was done, I believe, in 2015. And then we looked at, what are we going to need to program into this business plan to ensure that we have enough money to cover the capital cost in years one through 10? And this is one of the primary reasons for going out this length of time is to just gauge what type of costs that we can expect. Next slide. So we looked at two different methods. We looked at cost per gallon based on actual and estimated cost for the three years listed above. We took the total expenditures and divided it by the number of gallons sold. Gallons sold is the increment that the city uses when it sells to its customers. And it may be a little bit different when you think of large-scale acre feet. So the average cost for a gal, per a gallon, prior to considering the capital cost, was just about two and a half, just two and a half cents. And then when you look at, when you incorporate the average cost per gallon with the significant equipment replacement costs that are included in that prior slide, we're seeing the cost per gallon is closer to three cents. Next slide. To give you an idea how, how this all flows together, is you look where you see our deficit years, and then you'll also see where we're starting to ramp up our rates. And as we start to ramp up our, our, as we start to ramp up our, our fund balance, we're setting aside for those capital improvements beginning in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, with some of the larger expenditures occurring in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. There is some differences between the city scenario and the peer review. And the primary difference relates how we get to sustainability. The city scenario included multiple options. There are several ways that the council can get to sustainability. There could be a gradual ramp up of rates, maybe a partial ramp up in rates, and subsidizing with water entitlement revenues to help ease, ease and increase. The one thing about water entitlement revenues is they aren't necessarily an ongoing revenue. We've been fortunate in the last couple of years to receive a pretty steady stream, but to rely on it may not be realistic. And at the end of the day, if we're allocating at least $200,000 per year, and we're fortunate enough to get those sales, that's still not necessarily setting aside funds for capital improvements. And our scenario also includes, like, combinations of rates and subsidies. It includes references to repayment of the loan, which primarily affects, reflects the city's accounting methods. It has an estimated break-even point with capital at approximately three cents per gallon. The consultant conducted an independent scenario. And it's part of their scenario, they didn't want to include subsidies. Their methodology was looking at it as simply what is the break-even point? They did not also include the loan repayment. They assumed that would be outside, handled by an external source, which is what we're saying. We just included it for accounting purposes. And it hasn't, and although there are those changes, it had an estimated break-even point, the same as ours, with three cents per gallon. Another point to notice, note, is that at the end of the, at the end of this scenario, they were saying that the estimated break-even point would be 477,000. I mean, the estimated ending fund balance for this scenario would be $477,000. The city's was relatively similar as well. Next slide. The loan repayment plan is something that has been mentioned by council, as well as a concern for staff. There was one option that council can explore, which is provide a fresh start by using non-operating revenues to cover the prior year deficits. This includes committing the water entitlement promissory note in the amount of 625,187 to be used for the loan repayment. This would not impact the operations. It would, it would, it would pretty much provide the amount of interest to be paid if the interest on the loan were changed, charged based on the city's investment portfolio rate for the loan term with quarterly interest payments. This would mean that the sewer fund would receive the same amount of interest that it would have received if the funds were retained in the sewer fund and it, and baking it whole. The principal comes back, and the interest it would have earned would come back as well. And make the lump sum payment of, of the loan principal due upon receipt of the promissory notes. And in checking with the community development department, it is anticipated that we should be receiving those funds in the next fiscal year. And as, as part of the draft budget, we have initially thought, considered programming that money in. However, we have this evening to review this option with council, as well as moving the 150, 151,000 from the promissory note deposit, which is anticipated to come in for the other note at either the end of this fiscal year or the first part of next fiscal year. Next slide. So our recommendation is to receive the peer review of the Pacific Grove Local Water Project Business Plan and the analysis by DTA validating the city's assumptions, and authorize staff to begin looking at negotiations with Corisco, as well as approve a loan repayment plan for the sewer fund, inter-fund loan. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Council discussion. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tori. I, I have two kind of just detailed questions. What is the average rate? I, I believe I remember reading it in this report, but where, what Cal AM charges for this type of water per gallon right now?
Councilmember Tomlinson through the mayor, I believe it was just over three cents at the time that we did this report. We have not gone back in and analyzed for any other rate increases that may have occurred after this report was built.
Okay, so it would be more than that. I don't remember rates of water or electricity ever going down in the recent years. So just over three cents. And then my other question is, did we look at an option of rather than, I, I support you going to Corisco and negotiating this, but it, rather than get a locked-in rate, but do, in the ramp-up scenario, is there an escalator involved? So that they would agree to some kind of escalator to help, you, you know, rather than, than, than try to pick up three cents? Or maybe that's kind of a blow, so it's, it's something less, but with an automatic escalator in order to help with those maintenance costs?
I, Councilmember Tomlinson through the mayor. The ideal option would be to work for full cost recovery and then set a rate with an escalator for about two years, and then do a standard review of the operations and increase rates just like you would on the sewer fund. When you look at that, you look at what are rates and what do we need to cover our operating costs? We wouldn't necessarily say this is, we'd like to remove the cap and say we want to move to a full-cost recovery model, which would be ideal. I don't know if they would be willing to work with that, but that would be a suggestion.
Okay, I, we might be saying the same thing. I just, I, I just think that it is pretty standard to get a rate with an S, with a known escalator that would in, in. Am I suit too loud? Sorry. I'm trying to whisper.
You've gone from too soft.
Is that better? Now it's off.
Thanks.
Hello, hello.
Sorry.
Can you hear me, Tori?
Yes, can, can you hear me okay now?
Now she's really quiet. But yeah, so I, I just think that, you know, in the negotiations, you can think about putting in a price that has an automatic escalator over a 10-year term or that we negotiate with Corisco. If it's advantageous, that would be my recommendation to make sure we look at that for, for full-cost recovery, not for anything more than, than, than the, the operating costs. So those are my two questions. I think my overall big-picture comments are just that this, this seems to be one of the, the best options is to renegotiate the price with Corisco, get it back up to standard. And I'm sure they're going to want to negotiate something in exchange for that, which would be a longer lease. And that makes total sense. They're a great partner, and they've done a great job at the golf course. And so I, I'd like to encourage the, or authorize the city to enter into those negotiations. I'd like Mr. Go to continue to work with the operator there on how we can save for operations and, as well as programming in these improvements. You know, were, were these improvements and these maintenance and, and increases looked at when we first built this project? You know, typically, there's some kind of warranty or a 30-year maintenance cycle where you know when these hits are going to be coming. And so, you know, it, it seems as though maybe they were not contemplated, and, and that's definitely hitting us as far as where the operating costs are so high. So rather than in a few years from now, find out that there, there are even more unhidded, you know, costs that we haven't looked at, just having a frank conversation with the operators on, on what are the maintenance, when are they due? And so we can have predictable and controlled costs in that realm. So those are all my comments for now. Thank you.
Considering that there's, that there is two very different recommendations, doesn't sound like. Yeah, I, I'd like them to be considered separately. So I, I move to divide the question. The, the, the two questions are, one is authorize staff to begin negotiations with Corisco, and the second one is approve a loan repayment plan for the sewer fund, inter-fund loan. Do I hear a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, six, zero, one. Emilio absent.
And who was the second on that? Is that Mr. Coletti?
I, I think it was Coletti, but it was a horse race.
Whomever.
Mayor Protem McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Is my mic on? Yes, okay, great. Um, thank you, Ms. Hannah, for, for bringing this in, and Mr. Go. I'm, can, can you remind me, when was the $600,000 from the sewer fund loaned to the local water project? When did that take place?
Councilmember McAdams, through the mayor, the.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hannah, hold on, we can't hear you.
Okay, just so you know, when I turn her up in the chamber, your mics go louder as well. That's the only controls we have. Okay.
Okay, sorry, Ms. Hannah, please continue.
Am I, am I coming through okay now?
Yes. Yes, Tori.
Okay. It was approved with the budget adoption in June of two thousand and twenty.
Okay, and then during that time, what were the fixed terms repayment and interest set?
There were not, the terms were not set. It was going to be discussed as part of the Local Water Project Business Plan. There were some listed in the staff report, potentially similar to what I'm saying now, a three, was a three-year plan with interest similar to the city portfolio. But for final approval, there was some discussion on waiting till this plan was presented.
Okay, so in our city code, we have 6.18.010, which is called short-term inter-fund loans. And it clearly states that all loans shall be subject to City Council approval and contain fixed terms for repayment and interest payable to the lending fund. So did that happen?
What happened was council approved the loan, and rather than provide the terms, it was deferred pending the Local Water Project Business Plan. There were some suggested terms within the staff report, however, that was. There were some suggested terms within the staff report, however, that was deferred.
Okay, so if this were to ever happen again, I would just encourage staff that we follow our code because it reads really clear to me that when the council approves the loan, that that approval would could would include fixed terms repayment and interest payable to the lending fund. I mean, it's just, it's black and white, and we didn't do that. So in the future, we we need to do that. Also, for any future business endeavors or you know, any, any, anything like this, I would really implore the city and staff that we have a business plan and and to bring all the different scenarios and outlooks to the council and the public so we can have an idea of the best case scenario and the worst case scenario. You know, I mean, of course, the local water project is great and we're doing a, you know, a really good, we're we're being stewards of the environment and and that's lovely. However, you know, I don't the city is not in a position to just be working at a loss and that and that doesn't make sense. So I think for for future councils, it's helpful for us to receive all of the information, you know, and just really have a good idea of what lots of different situations can look like. I definitely support setting the terms of the loan, which it looks like we're going to do that this evening. And I would encourage that we take whatever water entitlement sales that we get and we pay off the loan. And so as far as interest rate, as it says in our code, are we will we be setting an interest rate? Is that what the twenty five thousand and change is coming from?
Councilmember McAdams through the mayor. The interest rate we were recommending were what it was consistent with the city's investment portfolio, which is, which we would look at quarterly when we allocate interest to the different funds on a quarterly basis. We would, we would allocate the interest due. That's equivalent to the rate that it would have earned, and we would also go back in arrears for the time that it the full funds have been held within the local water project and apply that amount.
And so you're going to prorate it to December twenty twenty?
Yes, as the funds transferred into that balance, we would be applying the interest on that those periods at the interest rate for that period.
Okay, great. I that's all the questions and comments I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Clitty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I I'm also concerned about using interfund loans for especially funds that are being generated through Prop two eighteen assessments, so I I think there's a lesson learned there hopefully, and that is to keep council advised on on any kind of loan from a Prop two eighteen funded inter loan or fund. You know, we're expressing the cost of the water in pennies per gallon. Nobody uses that. And I think maybe it gives an idea or a false idea that this is a small amount, but three cents per gallon is actually ninety seven hundred, well, nearly ninety eight hundred dollars per acre foot. Just to put that into some form of context, Cal AM is through their water purchase agreements with Pure Water Monterey is paying about twenty five to thirty five hundred dollars per acre foot. And when this, when this local water project was first brought up and presented to council, and there were a few of us that kind of were a little skeptical, you know, but because the finances really weren't presented in any meaningful way as far as a business plan and how how it would be sustainable. It was told, it was told to the to the council and to public that the cost of the water for the from the Pacific Grove Local Water Project would be two thirds of what we pay currently to Cal AM. And at that point, it was about fifty six hundred dollars per acre foot, which meant that the rates would have been about thirty seven hundred dollars an acre foot to produce water at the local water project. Now we're talking about charging ninety seven hundred dollars an acre foot. So obviously, the financing or the rates didn't quite work out as expected. And I'm I'm still concerned. There's a lot of, there's a lot of exposure to this operation that is not detailed in the business plan, and I'm concerned about that. So going forward, I would suggest that we receive quarterly reporting on the on the expenditures and the revenue at the local water project. During the construction phase, and I know some of my colleagues will remember this, there were quarterly reports on the construction effort. So I think we're going to need quarterly reports that show what the business operation is currently looking like. So that would mean detailed expenditures and revenues. We're talking about basically new water purchase agreement with Courseco. This, we've had this on the agenda on and off for several months now. Has Courseco even been approached? And is there any sense of their willingness to pay ninety seven hundred dollars an acre foot? I'll give that to either one of you.
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, we have approached Courseco, and we have talked about the rates. They also look at it in the same light per per a gallon is what they're looking at. Maybe that's because of the way the city is billing, but they do have seen that amount. And they they are aware that we're looking at this. They have expressed potential interest. However, they also have talked about a extended term that's still subject, of course, to negotiation and further and further discussion, but the subject has been opened with them.
All right. As regards the water purchase agreement with Courseco, can you explain the cap that was mentioned earlier in the presentation and how that affects any revenue performance? I'll give that to Mr. Go.
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, you're alluding to the cap that's noted in the Courseco lease of the I believe it's like four hundred and thirty thousand dollars and not to exceed. And recall the acre foot on the lease. But that's what you're referring to?
Yeah, the part of the portion of the lease that deals with the water purchase agreement.
What information are you looking for there, sir?
We have a cap on, so there's a cap, right?
That's correct.
We'll tell you what, Tori is the one who mentioned the cap. Why don't we ask Tori what she meant by the cap?
Well, what I believe Tori was alluding to was negotiating terms with Courseco, the attempt to remove that cap and just pay a base fee instead of having any water noted in the lease that is capped at a specific price. So those will all be subject to terms of negotiation.
Okay, so you're suggesting basically a pay as you go rate. It'll be three cents per gallon, although I don't like that that rate. And there is no minimum amount due. There, for instance, I think right now they have to pay the city a certain amount, whether they use, you know, irregardless of what their what their water demand is. So that goes away. And what were they paying when they used more than this quote unquote cap? I see a lot of blank stares, so I'm not
I'm not sure.
I think what we're what we're thinking. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, I'm not sure if they've exceeded their cap. They're very they're very cognate of where they stand on that cap. And they really tried to talk into the GM and the superintendent there. They're very aware of that cap and they're basing their budgets around that. I know that to be the case, so I think that if we were able to remove that cap and enter into negotia or enter into negotiations with them in an attempt to remove that cap, we might be able to use that removal as leverage and provide the opportunity to sell more water to them. It's just a means of negotiations, and until we actually sit down with them, I don't think that we're going to be able to respond accordingly to your question.
Okay, so it's, so we with a cap represents an impediment to potentially getting more revenue. So please just explain what the cap is. So just everyone understands it, kind of get it on.
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor. The lease contains a clause that says the tenant shall pay cost billed by Cal AM or the City of Pacific Grove or any other purveyor for sub potable irrigation water to the golf course up to a cap of four hundred and forty three thousand three hundred and thirty two dollars per year for such water effective each September first, the cap itself shall be increased by two percent.
So, okay, so the cap is a dollar amount then?
It is a, it is a full dollar amount.
Okay, and they don't pay anything for the water if they pay, if they're use more water than that cap represents?
I'm just looking at the lease right now. Should the tenant pay less than three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars per water year for water usage? Tenant shall pay the landlord a minimum annual water charge set at three hundred and seventy five thousand less the actual annual water paid by the tenant.
Okay, well, I think, thank you for digging in there for me, but I think this all comes to that leads me to believe that we should just be paying to simplify this lease, obviously, so that it is just as pay as you go and I don't know. I I don't have anything else to say, Your Honor.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm I'm in support of both the recommendations here. I I wanted to point out that earlier this year, I attended the the PG Chambers annual award ceremony and Course, uh, Courseco was actually cited during that ceremony for excellence in that ceremony. And the Courseco operator actually went on stage to commend the public private partner partnership that they had with the city. So in in what we're doing here is really negotiating with the contractor who wants to work with the city to move things forward, and we should take it that way. I appreciate the staff, the information that they provided. I think there's a lot of good information here to say that this is this is an ongoing expense that's going to happen with this project related to membranes and whatnot. And we should be cognizant of that fact. But but we have an operator who wants to work with the city, so we should move forward. So thank you.
I want to thank staff very much for bringing this forward. It's been a long time coming. And a few of my takeaways are, first of all, with the peer review and the re-looks at this, I'm pretty well convinced that this local water project is operating as best it can, and we are going to on the current rate structure, lose about two hundred thousand dollars a year. I believe that includes the capital replacement reserve also, which is a prudent thing to have, right? Early on in the plant, you don't need much capital replacement later on. So thank you for that. And I also agree absolutely keep hearing, as Councilmember Pedori said, that Courseco has been a very good golf course operator, and so things have gone well with that. I don't want to jeopardize that relationship. However, when it comes to getting us back into financial solvency on the local water project, there seems to be only one way to do that, and that's to get the customer to pay more money for the water. And Courseco is the biggest customer, you know, the city is cemetery, lighthouse, and hopefully in the future, Perkins Park and and Lovers Point as well. But Courseco is the main customer, and so question is, well, can we get them to pay more for the water? And I'm not terribly excited about talking about ramp or step changes as such like that. I'm like, well, why would Courseco pay more money for a contract that they currently have for water that runs through twenty twenty nine? That's another seven years. And I believe there's only one thing that they want, and actually Ms. Hannah already mentioned it, and that's to extend the contract. And that's exactly what happened in two thousand sixteen when Mr. Harvey and Mr. Go negotiated the current current contract. And they got an extra five years on the lease. That was the the price that we paid to get them to sign the lease if I'm I'm saying that right. And and so that's what we're going to have to do again to get them to pay a higher fees now. And I think it's mortgaging the future. I suspect they'll want probably ten more years to twenty thirty nine. And so we're actually just mortgaging in my, in my way of thinking, we're mortgaging the future. I think we're in a much better position if we do not, we just do not reopen this contract. And and then in twenty twenty nine, the city will be able to renegotiate with Courseco, but we'll, the city will be in a much better position because then we'll be looking at the the golf course operation. And and hopefully, things go well with Courseco. Courseco wants to stay in Pacific Grove. We want them to stay in Pacific Grove, but they're going to see that, hey, look, there's other people out there that could come in and possibly pay more for water. And that's just business sense, and I I don't want to, I don't want to give that away at this point. We have we have this, in my mind, a pretty feeble card to play. And that that is extending the contract out past twenty twenty nine for probably another ten years, and I I think it's the wrong move, so I won't be supporting that. And of course, repayment of the sewer fund loan. I think the the proposal was on the five twenty lighthouse repayment of the five twenty lighthouse promissory note. And the interest rates calculated on the the current city investment fund rate makes perfect sense. Let's do it. My understanding is all the water entitlements the sales, they go to the general fund and then they get immediately transferred to the local water project. Great. I think that's absolutely the right thing to do. So right, Mayor Proten McAdams.
Thank you for your comments, and I have a question. Could we perhaps allocate any and all water entitlement sales to go to a savings fund that would pay the ongoing loss of the local water project? Does that make sense, Ms. Hannah?
Councilmember McAdams through the mayor, this year's complete water entitlement sales are going to the local water project. What it could, the water entitlement sales could be held in a separate fund, or they could be transferred, or there could be a percentage set. We don't know what those sales may be in the future, but that is something that can be done.
Right, so for me, if if I were talking about till twenty twenty nine, that's seven years times two hundred thousand. You know, I mean, until the local water project is solvent, could all of the water entitlement sales go to a fund where it's sitting and it's going to pay the losses, whatever the loss is for that year? That that's my thought.
The only comment that I, Councilmember McAdams, the only comment that I I could say is that our auditors have mentioned too that we would want to try to show that we have a plan to make it sustainable. One of the reasons why is that if it becomes where it can't support itself, then really the general fund is set to support it. So So um it, it could, but that could be something that comes up as well. If we're saying in perpetuity, all water entitlement sales go there, not just like a, a subsidy to ramp up to a certain point.
Well, not in perpetuity, just until it's solvent.
The, the challenge would be is if you're saying twenty twenty-nine, there could be a steep increase for whoever the purveyor is, that could happen because in essence, as well is um if we're only transferring two hundred thousand and that's all that it sells, it may not be sufficient to fund the capital improvements. Right now, we're subsidizing at close to the two hundred thousand dollar level and we still aren't really setting aside any monies for the long term, we're just paying the operation right now.
Okay, thank you for that, I mean, that's what makes sense to me, I mean, that's what I would like to see this council do. And it could be maybe perhaps for uh twelve months and looked uh at an annual basis during budget time to extend that. That would, that would be um uh a motion that I'm happy to make, I know it's, it's separate.
Good, good.
So I move that um for the next twelve months, um any and all water entitlement sales be allocated to a separate fund to cover the loss of the local water project. And this is separate from um repayment of the loan.
I'll second that.
I have a question on the, on the motion. So the separate fund um, I don't know, just my understanding is the receipts, the revenue from the water entitlement sales must go to the general fund, is that correct, Ms. Hannah?
That is where the, the asset, uh the intangible asset resides. So at each year end, we have to adjust it based on the sales. To change that um is something that our auditors really aren't in favor of moving it to another fund. Um because it was, it was stated that really, you know, we checked with the city attorney and it was that these funds should apply to the general fund or the entitlements. So um yes, the revenues come out of, come into the general fund and they are transferred out right now to another fund.
And what fund is that?
Right now, they are being transferred to the local water project fund for this fiscal year on a quarterly basis.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a little confused, or so uh are we suggesting creating a new fund? And I'm, I'm unclear as the purpose.
So the purpose would be to, so I'm sorry, so right now, all, all of the water entitlement sales are going to the local water project fund, is that, that's correct?
In this fiscal year, it is established that all of the water entitlement, water entitlement revenues, they are receded in the general fund and then they are transferred to the general, to the local water project, so yes. From a, from a general perspective, they are all going to the local water project, it's more an accounting mechanism where they need to land in the general fund and be moved out. We had also.
All right, what is the plan for this coming fiscal year?
The coming fiscal year, we have initially uh programmed in the six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar amount in to the local water project for repayment of the sewer loan as well as the one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars associated with the second promissory note, the non-refundable deposit. And I believe there's at least one hundred thousand dollars of water entitlement revenues going over there as well to supplement.
Okay, so that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of water entitlement sales that you, that will be allocated towards the six hundred thousand dollar loan. That will not be going into the local water project fund.
Councilmember McAdams, can you, can you repeat that a minute for, for a moment?
I'm sorry?
Can, can you repeat that, I didn't hear the first part of your comment.
Sure, so there, there's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of local, of water entitlement revenue that you were talking about that would automatically go towards the six hundred thousand dollar loan, is that correct?
Actually, um the six hundred and twenty-five thousand from the promissory note, that was kind of the designation of receipting that and using that full six hundred thousand dollars plus whatever interest to pay that off. In addition, there would be a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars from the secondary promissory note, which represents the deposit going to the local water project to help subsidize operations plus approximately one hundred thousand dollars estimated of regular water entitlement sales to the local water project.
Okay, thank you, and so when is the promissory note deposit going to be received by the city?
We are anticipating that the six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar one will definitely be next fiscal year, it's uncertain if it will be the beginning of the year or the middle of the year. The one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar deposit from the promissory note could come in this year. Uh we can't say for certain, there was some um issues when it went into escrow as far as there was a change in percentage of ownership. And so our community development department is working with a developer to get the necessary documents in so we can close that portion of the sale. So that I would anticipate being in either this, the end of this fiscal year or the first part of next fiscal year.
So I, my question was, or is this motion creating another fund?
Ken, I'd like to reset my, my.
Resend, okay.
Is that okay?
All right, that makes sense.
Can I, can I ask a question about it, even though I, I think I'm tracking? Um but, so there's funds already programmed to do the six twenty-five loan repayment. In addition to that, there's one fifty-one and a hundred of regular water sales that is going to be programmed for operating losses. And we, if, if, if there doesn't need to be another motion in order to make that so, then, then I'm fine. But I, I thought, I didn't know that all of that was already happening, so um Ms. Hannah just explained it, so I guess that that is happening, so. Um I, so fine, we'll rescind that motion, I, may I ask a question to you, Mayor? If you don't um support, so I heard tonight that Courseco is interested in having a discussion about rates and, and changing the rates. Um I, I do support having a conversation with them and, and allowing the city to go begin those negotiations. We don't know how they're going to end up, we don't have to necessarily enter into any of the agreements, I would like to hear how they go. Um but if, what my question is, is if we didn't raise the rates with our biggest purchaser, customer, uh and we now know we have at least a two hundred plus thousand dollar operating loss annually, which is going to be more when you start programming in the out, the forecast out of, of what it costs to run the plant and all the upgrades and things, this is the, the golden years where the operating loss is as low as it's going to be. Um what, where will that money come from? If we don't ask for at least some increase? And, and, and I also don't think that Courseco is going to make up all the difference. Probably nor should they, uh I, I'm not an expert, I know Torres worked for Monterey Wind Water, so I trust her and her rate setting analysis. Um but there are professionals that do rate studies and, and I, I think that if we can prove to or show Courseco, um you know, this is the going, going rate and they're not get, getting some terrible deal, you know, we, we want to be um it just seems like this, this price was set so low for what it costs, so this business plan was, was not good. So we're, it's going to take a couple different um ways to get back to be in the green. And negotiating the price per gallon is one. Um the water entitlement sales is another one. And reducing the operating costs is another one, and then getting additional customers is potentially another one. So um all of these things together will have to make this project uh hopefully be in the green. But so my question is to the mayor is, you know, do you have another idea of how to deal with the deficits?
So um assuming the PG Hotel comes through and they'll owe us, um I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Harvey has a number off the, off his cuff of, about uh uh one million two hundred thousand dollars, that buys us roughly six years, right? Just six years of loss excluding any other water entitlement sales. Um assuming uh that we don't even have those. The PG Hotel um promissory note payment will give us uh six years and then and then we have the lo- loan repayment, when is the loan um repayment ending? But it buys us, it buys us six years, that gets us to, to my magic year twenty twenty-nine, which is also the end of the contract with Courseco, that's the time um to renegotiate, gives us that breathing room anyhow.
And, and the one point two million coming from the PG Hotel, you're saying would, would at least put a dent in the losses that would be, that have, well, that are accruing as.
They would cover the, they, they should cover the losses up until the time, about the time that um the Courseco lease is up and we're in a sort of unfettered position to uh negotiate.
I guess my, my, I, I just, I hate to have to use the, the water sales on this, um because we were all been talking about that one point two million as money that the city would get to spend on other things. Um and I think it's still worthwhile to try to negotiate a, a price increase now without having to promise years, too many years, um I guess the city manager, can we hear what you have to say?
I just, through the mayor, just want to point out a couple of things you probably already well know, but the promissory note doesn't become due the total amount until occupancy takes place, so I want to think that that's going to be swift, I have no guarantees of that. It's in the same category as we have no guarantees of water entitlement sales, we're heading into potentially some interesting times in the, in the building, in the development world, right? Price of capitals going up, so we do have some, some variables. I think the other thing I should point out, and this might be obvious too, we have an excellent relationship with Courseco today, it's twenty twenty-two. Um leadership changes, I don't know what twenty twenty-nine is going to look like, we have an interest today, I don't know that we will have. It just, there's some variables there, so I, I just, I'm just pointing out things that you all know, but you know, that's some uncertainty. Whereas today, we, you know, and this is part of why we wanted to maybe not have such a detailed open session discussion, but we have some, some commitments uh to, to have heartfelt discussions with Courseco on the real topic of rate and term. Uh they've also indicated that this is their diamond uh in their, in their course uh collection. And this is where, you know, they see their future and they actually want to invest in this course more, so they want that opportunity. Um they have the wind at their backs now and they want to, to move forward, so these are all things that we have going for us today. I don't know what's going to happen in twenty twenty-nine.
Okay, thank you, um I could make a, I think we have two motions to, just to cover. Can we maybe do the easier one first, the loan one, want me to make a motion for that? Or does Nick?
Councilmember Smith wanted to speak.
Uh, um, no, thank you, I'm sorry, it's getting late. So uh yeah, I'm just thought right off the bat, I'd go backwards and say I'm, let's do the loan uh as recommended by staff, I think that's where we're headed with that. And I, I don't, I also agree with the mayor on negotiating right now. I think it doesn't necessarily have to be twenty twenty-nine, but right at this moment, I'm not in support of that. And I think that we can kind of see how, how it all breaks down in the next couple of years and move forward with this loan, but you know, watch things uh with the other piece because I don't, we may not make it to twenty-nine before we negotiate, but I certainly don't want to give a ten-year extension for a couple, for three cents of per, per gallon or whatever that, that is. So that's kind of where I'm at with it right now.
Councilmember Pedori.
Yes, I, I, I would say that we need to think of in terms of like making things whole and, and right now we're in operating losses. Uh we don't know what the future is going to hold, we don't know when the hotel is going to come into play. Uh we don't know when anything is going to offset anything else. Uh at this point in time, we're negotiating with Courseco, Courseco is getting ready to make things whole for us as we move along and it's happening in the present. So we need to start negotiating and make this contract whole completely instead of introducing more variables. Uh which just complicates things in my opinion. Uh further, I, I do think that there are no uh, the water sales, I mean, as far as I know, uh when, when, when the original contract was framed, we were expecting water sales to be at a certain capacity. We're not meeting that capacity at the moment, therefore we're running into losses. In addition, the, the expenditure that is happening with respect to uh maintaining this project was also not taken into account. So a reasonable explanation is to work with the operator to see how, what we can do to get to the point where the city and the operator are working in tandem with each other. So my, my view again is to support the recommendations uh which were presented by the staff and move forward, thank you.
Councilmember Clitty.
Thank you, Your Honor, um to the point of capacity or we're not selling as much as we expected to, that's not quite accurate. The average water demand, which basically our entitlement is built off of, when the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District ran those numbers, was around eighty-five or eighty-eight acre feet, the average. And we just heard that we produced and sold ninety-nine, so we're actually selling more water than the historic average at the golf courses. So I don't think that can be used as a rationale or a, or an explanation of why we're short. The chickens were always going to come home to roost on this project and they're, they are here. I understand what the mayor is saying, I understand what Councilmember Smith is saying, but I don't think it hurts to hear what they want to offer us. And then we can have the discussion, you know, no, you guys have got us over a barrel and you're going to, you're going to take advantage of it, uh that's not going to be something we want to do, so I guess I'm, I'm in favor of hearing, hearing what the bad news is later or after they negotiate, or maybe it's good news, I don't know, hearing the news later after there's some negotiation. That's my take.
Mayor Pro Tem McAdams.
May, may I try another motion?
Sure.
So I move that we approve a loan repayment plan for the sewer fund interfund loan and uh and request that Public Works and Accounting provide a uh report on the local water project um income and expenses every six months. For twice a year.
Is that the end of your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second on the motion?
As stated in the, in the agenda packet.
The term, let's, let's get, let's get a second on it and then let's ask questions about the motion.
Second.
Okay, um. So I actually had the same question about the terms of the loan, it's in the packet, did I miss that?
So it does say um that staff is recommending using the proceeds from the six twenty-five one eighty-seven promissory note.
Okay, but, but Ms. Hannah will be wondering what exactly are the terms of payment? Or, well, I guess you mentioned that we'll just use the interfund, the, excuse me, the, the current city's investment fund loan rate.
Mirrored and forecasted.
And, and the, the term is when the 520 Lighthouse promissory note is, is repaid in full?
Yes.
I guess I have to accept that. And I do.
A second. Okay, let me just, the clarification, okay.
Can we, can we clarify with Ms. Hannah that that's what she was recommending?
Yes, it would be consistent with the investment portfolio rates with interest paid on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
That's part of the motion?
Yes.
We're adding to it more?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'll second.
The investment portfolio rate. Okay. Councilmember Padori?
Yeah, just a quick question. I thought we split the questions for the motion. So this is the second part of the motion that you're restating. Is that right?
Yes, and, but I'm adding the reporting mechanism.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Okay. I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 601. Councilmember Emilio absent.
I can make the second motion.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Okay, I move that we authorize staff to begin negotiations with Courseco to negotiate new, new rates and, and come back to us with the results of that negotiation. Should I put a time on that?
Sure, I, I might suggest six months.
To, to negotiate for the next six months?
Within six months, or you can say within three months. Three months, six months? I think that's reasonable.
Okay, within three months.
I'll second. I'll just ask a question. You said to negotiate rates. Perhaps you intended to mean renegotiate the entire contract?
Yeah, it, it's not limited to rates.
Yeah, I understood that to be the intent. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. Right, motion passes 421. Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor in dissent. And I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you, everyone, staff, the, our, the public, whether they're watching on Channel 25 or on Zoom, thank you very much. And to my colleagues as well, thank you. And everyone, have a good night. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.